Good morning Chairman Dennis and Board of County Commissioners. Thanks to everyone for attending and tuning into today's BLCC meeting. I'm Van Williams with Sedgwick County Communications. We've got a few guests here today and then we'll get on to today's agenda item. First, this is Cancer Prevention Month and Deputy Chief Larry Tengney is here to share a PowerPoint and talk about cancer prevention efforts in Fire District One.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, Chairman. Larry Tengney Deputy Chief Sedgwick County Fire District One. In front of you, those aren't stocking caps, just to let you know right now. Those are part of our program that we have in the Fire District to move forward with trying to prevent cancer within our ranks. Cancer line of duty deaths in the fire service has changed in the last five years. They're saying about 61% of the deaths now in the fire service on a national scale are due to cancer. Heart disease is down to 18%. On average firefighters live 10 to 15 years less than the average public. To go a little bit into why on a national scale, for every five degrees our body temperature increases, we have a 400% chance more of absorption of the carcinogens that are in our fires today, especially with the what we call modern fires versus legacy fires. Legacy fires are of the old construction type. The synthetics of today are a lot more hazardous to our firefighters as they enter. You can see the neck skin temperature is about 91 degrees and as the temperature rises, so does the absorption rate in our firefighters as they enter these structures. On a whole, the permeability of our firefighters when they go in, you can see the groin areas, 300% jaw area and the forehead and scalp. What you have in front of you is what's called a nomex hood. Those nomex hoods have been changed through the years. We're actually going to a different one than what you have in front of you. It's more of a particulate separator. They're a little bit more expensive, but we're getting ready to go to those to protect our firefighters. You can see there was a test done by NIOSH and the CDC on how this permeation occurs in the neck areas and this is what that nomex hood protects us from is these particulates that enter our bodies. Firefighters average about 9% higher than the general public to attain cancer in their lifetime. So we think that we're way ahead of the game with Sedgwick County and what we're trying to do to prevent and mitigate these things. And part of that is a nomex hood policy. Not only are we changing the hoods, but also we have a hood switch out program to when firefighters are on the scene, they switch out hoods immediately and they're washed and they're given a brand new hood or clean hood to go back and if they get another fire that day, they can put that on. We have a new portable sink. The picture of the wash basin, we're purchasing that. What that does is helps us rehab our firefighters on the scene. We can clean them before they go into a rehab situation or even get back in their trucks. We can wash a lot of these carcinogens off before they get back to the station. We also have a diesel exhaust system at every station, every truck to where we can hook it up as they enter and when they leave. This prevents the carcinogens from diesel exhaust, not only in our apparatus space, but if the doors are open to our living quarters. Gear extractors or wash machines is the general term. We now have, for years, we only had one in the whole Fire District. We've always had a, for about 20 years, we've had a wash program where we wash our gear every six months, no matter what. We've gotten to the point now where we wash it after every fire. We also have two sets of gear now for every firefighter on our department. And now we're up to four of these gear extractors at our stations. And our goal eventually is to have one at each station to prevent the continued handling of that dirty gear as we move from fire to fire or station to station. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this, for what we do to try to keep our people safe.
Thank you Chief. Do I have any questions or any comments from any of our board members? Let me make a quick comment. Actually, I just received this this week from the City Wichita Fire Department, but it's a nice pen that says Wichita Fire Never Forget and then on the back says Never Ever We don't want to have more names on the wall and so what you're doing is something that is very, very important to make sure that we protect each of our fire men and women that are out there protecting our citizens. I appreciate what you're doing very much for us. We do not want to get to the situation where we have another name on the wall for any reason whatsoever. And even those that acquire cancer or something later on, we need to make sure that we do everything we can do to prevent that from happening. So I appreciate what you're doing and what you're recommending for us and I think you'll have the support of our Commission.
Well, thank you Chairman and Board. And also just another note, I wanted you to know that we are starting to train our partners in Sedgwick County on our policy and how we're doing rehab. So this isn't just about us, it's about our whole, our partnership of fire departments here in the local Sedgwick County area. So thank you very much for your support.
Thanks for being here, I appreciate it.
Larry, thank you for sharing awareness about cancer prevention. Next up is Shelley Duncan with the Central Plains Healthcare Partnership. She's here to talk about an exciting fundraising event and share a video.
Chairman Dennis and Commissioners, good morning. Project Access is a program under Central Plains Healthcare Partnership. And Project Access is a program for low-income residents of Sedgwick County who have no health insurance. We leverage donated healthcare in the community to help these individuals who have been diagnosed with a very serious health condition. We work with 635 physicians in the county who donate care as well as all of the hospitals. We have 14 dentists and other healthcare providers. Project Access has been supported by Sedgwick County since its inception in 1999, so thank you so much for that. Since that time, we have served over 14,200 patients with a total of over $212 million in donated care by our generous medical community. Over 60% of those served are employed but cannot afford healthcare. In September of this year, we will be celebrating 20 years of helping low-income, vulnerable citizens of Sedgwick County. In late August, Project Access will be hosting an edgy, sky-high event that will help support the future of this program. Access the Edge is a thrilling event that involves rappelling 19 stories down the 125 North Market Building, commonly known as the New York Life Building. And here's a preview of what that's going to look like. There you go. So obviously that was not Wichita, but we will be having that very similar activity done right here in Wichita. Several of our County Commissioners have already agreed to participate as VIP rappellers and we appreciate that so much. There are many opportunities to be involved in this event and you will be assured an experience of your lifetime. You can go to www.cphcp.com to learn more about this and join our County Leaders in this adrenaline-charged event. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here and bringing us up speed on that. I know that three Commissioners have already volunteered. Two of us are saying.
If there's only room for two, I'll back out.
I am not backing out whatsoever. I am doing that. Yes.
Did we have those three on the record?
Three to two.
Okay, I want to share that there's a public meeting today from 5 to 6 o'clock to learn more about appointed County Manager Tom Stotz. That meeting is at the Sedgwick County Zoo's Cargill Learning Center. So come out and get to know Tom a little better and Commissioners will be there as well. Reminder that tomorrow is Valentine's Day, so do right by your sweetheart and loved ones. Okay? And then we'll go to today's agenda now. The agenda includes several board appointments, a partnership agreement, and a report from the Board of Bids and Contracts. Thank you.
Well, thank you Van. I appreciate it. I want to welcome everyone that's here in the audience and those that are watching us on KPDS and online. With that, I'd like to call a meeting to order for the Board of County Commissioners for Wednesday, February 13th, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invitation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item please.
Roll call Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. We have two individuals signed up to speak on the public agenda today. The first individual is Kent Rowe. If you'll please approach the podium and state your name for the record, sir.
Hello, I'm Kent Rowe and my District Commissioner is Pete Meitzner and thank you for hearing us out. I'm here today to talk about the Smart Grid for Wichita. That's something we do. I'm actually the Conservation Chair for Kansas Sierra Club as well as a board member on Society of Alternate Resources. And we do promote not just a Smart Grid, but renewable energy, clean renewable energy. And that is something that's apparently become a topic here and we'd like to bring you up to speed on what is happening nationwide and actually worldwide. We're developing a plan for a clean energy generation for Sedgwick County. That is not just power production, but it's also about transportation, economic development, public health, cancer awareness again. And the armed forces have already done a lot of inroads. Aircraft development has to do with clean energy. And what is that? That is battery development. The V2G, Vehicle to Grid entails what's happening in many parts of the globe as well as this country. Vehicle to Grid is that you don't just plug your vehicle into an outlet like we see around town. It charges both ways depending on the time of use. When the peak demand is high, the vehicles actually discharge back through the grid and avoid the peaks that occur in most demand times. Some of the most dirtiest energy, coal, nuclear, is used in those times. These are virtual power plants and have become virtual power plants in many parts of Europe right now and it's being documented. Asia, of course, China is doing this, probably at a greater extent than we even realized a couple of years ago. And that is something very exciting with battery vehicles. And as you very well know, battery vehicles are going to become the rule in our sales, production, and transport industry. Currently Maze High School is having a fundraiser for their rooftop solar. That is expected to go just beyond power production in that the school buses, Bluebird's Building, that are electrified, those buses actually power the school during peak demand times and times of need. And it's also essential for emergency preparedness. Wichita Transit has already made the step, as you may very well know, to having the Proterra electric buses come in. Eleven buses are coming in this year for the Wichita Transit. These are clean buses. That also is going to be part of the V2G Vehicle to Grid Power Production, Power Storage as well as the buses. The armed forces have already done so and are continuing to develop that. Aircraft, aircraft are going to be electric. Don't be too alarmed there, but the battery-powered aircraft are actually hybrids. They use the standard turbine propulsion as well as the backup batteries. That helps make airports aerodromes cleaner, free from pollution contaminants in that they take off mainly on electrical. And then they cruise at altitude where they can back off on those turbines and then they land back on electrical with turbine backup assist. That is, first certification for a commuter aircraft is expected to be the year 2021. Lockheed, Martin, all of these have been enunciated. What I intend to do in the successive weeks is outline surveys that have already been done with respect to property values, 30 years of North American Wind Energy Acceptance Research. This is out of Berkeley Lab. National Survey of Wind Power Project Neighbors Summary of Results. On-site renewable energy, this is prepared primarily for state and local climate energy programs, bodies such as yourselves. And I know you've commissioned a study on that and we would actually expect out of this study that the county will start installing rooftop power generations on county facilities and pass amendments like most states already have abolishing punitive restrictions on rooftop solar by homeowners associations, covenants, and so forth, like Texas Property We attended a forum last night on school budgeting, Education for Kansas, hosted by KMW Radio and Lieutenant Governor Rogers was present. And a lot of this has to do with economics, of course. This is vital to saving money on our transportation, but it's also public health. We're actually coal rolling our schoolchildren right now with diesel buses and that is a shame. We see this every day and this is something with electrification of transportation that will eliminate. That's just one aspect of this. Renewable energy for Sedgwick County is not just preferred, it is vital that we do this to propel ourselves into the near future. It is not the future really, it's the present, it's ongoing now. Check into it. I'll be happy to help with this study, happy to help with your knowledge of it and I'll expect to be back next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here today. By the way, just to let everyone know, on March 28th, we're going to have a public forum on alternate energy and impacts and so forth over at the Sedgwick County Zoo in the Cargill Learning Center. So everyone is invited. That word hasn't got out yet, but since you brought it up today, it's a good time to start discussing it. Thank you. Please, sorry. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thanks for the presentation and I might encourage you to, most of us, we are represented and the whole county is represented on an organization called WAMPO. Okay, so I know it's related to transportation, they are looking at current trends, future, and where are we going and they're a pretty good source for maybe some of the data that you're talking about and it can be dispersed among members of the policy body as they're getting into that because I think just one entity like us, it might be difficult to get through to everybody, but WAMPO is a good source and they probably have a lot of material already that you can share, bounce ideas, facts, non-facts, all this stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you Kent and Jennifer for being here today. I appreciate the phone call that we had last week regarding your concerns and I would love to read some of those reports if you could send those to me via email at lacy.cruz@sedgwick.gov. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we have one more individual, actually Jennifer Connolly has signed up to speak today. Please approach the podium and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Connolly and I'm not an expert in the field like Kent and some other people in our state. We have wonderful people in our state and I was thinking about after I looked at the County Commissioners' website, I finally found it and I looked at it and thank you for thinking about this topic. I think it's an extremely important topic that we have. The good news is we really do have experts that have been working in this field for a long time and it's a clean energy project. They have a lot of staff members, their director. I just want to read you a couple of things about this particular staff member who's been working even with Sam Brown back, was very instrumental in helping us getting wind in our state. And we're at 40% of our energy is now produced with wind and projects are happening all over the place. There's what they call power purchase agreements, if you're not all aware of that, what power purchase agreements are. But basically, there's companies that come in and Target is one of them, they'll have 150 different facilities that they want to use a power purchase agreement and basically they're off-site wind projects that they're coming to our state. I've heard that Kansas can be one of those Saudi Arabias of wind. These help our farmers. Basically, what this does for our farmers is I've heard stories of farmers that were about to go under, they didn't have any way to make an income anymore. Family farms are disappearing and these wind turbines are keeping our farmers going. These projects are happening everywhere. The expert, I'm just going to read you about Dorothy Barnett, just a little bit. I'll just give you one of her examples and she's the staff director and they have many experts and I can send you that information. She's been working with all kinds of communities. Barnett got her start in wind energy with the Reno County Wind Energy Task Force, which has awarded the Governor's Energy Award of Energy Education in 2008. Dorothy attended Friends University, but the other things is she's prospective provides expert testimony at regulatory proceeding and has been published in the Electricity Journal in 2014. Barnett received the advocacy leadership award from the U.S. Clean Energy Education and Empowerment Program run by the U.S. Department of Energy and MIT Energy Innovatives. So what I'm saying, there is a huge staff and they've been doing this for years and they've been working with all of our representatives coordinating projects and they have lawyers on their staff, they have people that have been working in the industry in education and other areas. So I'll, like I said, give you that information on their projects that they've been working through throughout the state. Also, she is from Reno County and she did sit in on all the meetings. She said that there's three of their Commissioners there, two of them voted for the project, one against. Reno County Planning Commission is where they go to too. So basically, the way I understand it, there probably wasn't a reason for a moratorium because you have to go through the planning commission. Maybe I understand it incorrectly, but that's okay if I'm wrong, but I'm just telling you what I understand. You won't have to go through the moratorium and you can lift that moratorium anytime. What she said is they would have not considered Reno County if there was a moratorium, but they do realize that you have to go through the planning commission before any projects are approved. So, you know, I understand there's like concerns about noise and things like that. These studies have already been done. In fact, she gave some PDFs of these studies and they're all very good studies that she gave us PDFs on. So if anybody wants to talk to her about what went on at those County Commission meetings, she would be glad to answer and actually one of the Commissioners that are really interested in approving these projects. So that's it.
Well, thank you very much for being here today and don't forget to mark your calendar for March 28th. Thank you. Don't have anyone else signed up to speak on the public agenda today, but if there's anyone else who would like to speak, we'll provide you the opportunity now. I see no one. Next item please.
Appointments. Item A, accept the resignation of Brian Entz from the position of Treasurer for the Sedgwick County Lincoln Township Board.
Good morning Commissioners Mike Lapune, interim County Counselor. You have before you the resignation of Brian Entz, the Treasurer of Lincoln Township Board and we'd ask that you approve accepting the resignation.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner.
Yes, I make a motion to approve this or accept this resignation and I know I'm working with the Lincoln Township to get a replacement sooner than later, but we don't have one as of this morning. So the motion is to accept.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to any discussion. Seen none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item please.
Item B, Resolution Appointing Individuals to the Sedgwick County Board for On-Site Wastewater Installation and Maintenance and Sanitary Service in Positions of Engineer, Installers, Haulers, and the General Public.
Mike Lapune, interim County Counselor. Again Commissioners, you have before you a slate of appointments. This board that deals with the wastewater sanitary systems in the county is composed of haulers and installers and engineers and one member from the general public, seven appointments in all. The appointments you have before you are... For installers, we have Tim Luber's reappointment and Dan Newfarmer, an appointment, and Chad Mills, an appointment. For haulers, we have Randy Worth's a reappointment and Marvin Short, a reappointment. The engineer that's being appointed is Austin Gottlob and the former engineer that's being appointed now as a general public appointment is Chris Bone. And you have resolutions for each of these appointments and reappointments. They've been reviewed by our department in proper form and ask that you approve the resolutions.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Lapune? Seen none, move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to any discussion. Seen none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item please.
Item C, Resolution Reappointing Darrell Atterbury, Bel Air Police Chief to the Sedgwick County Regional Forensic Science Center Advisory Board and the Chief of Police of Second and Third Class City Position.
Commissioners Mike Lapune, interim County Counselor. Again, this is the appointment, the Commission has two of the appointments to this board are coming up in these next two items. This appointment is to the Forensic Science Center Advisory Board and is a police chief of a second and third class city. a police chief of a second and third class city, chief, in this case, we have Chief Darrell Atterbury here from the City of Bel Air, and that's the recommended appointment, and we have a resolution approving the same, and it's in proper form, and ask that you approve the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Papoun, any questions for Mr. Papoun? Seeing none, move that we adopt the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Well, welcome, and our clerk is here to swear you in.
Good morning Commissioners. All right, please raise your right hand. I solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Regional Forensic Science Center Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. You'd like to say anything?
Just thank you for the appointment, pleasure to serve.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks for being here. Okay, next item, please.
Item D, resolution reappointing Dr. Ronald Varner to the Sedgwick County Regional Forensic Science Center Advisory Board in the position of an organization outside of the county doing business with the Forensic Science Center.
Mike Papoun, interim county councillor, this is your second appointment to this board today, this is the appointment of an outside organization, a person doing business, a person doing business from an outside organization that works with the Forensic Science Center. This is a reappointment of Dr. Ronald Varner, who's the Butler County Coroner, and we have a resolution before you appointing Dr. Varner, it's in proper form, and ask that you approve the resolution.
Any questions, Mr. Papoun? Seeing none, move that we adopt the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item E, resolutions appointing commissioners to various boards and committees.
Mike Papoun, interim county councillor, again, these are the appointments that this board makes, appointing various county commissioners to various boards throughout the county, and it's again a slate of, I believe, eleven resolutions. The resolutions are as follows, first resolution is appointing Commissioner Cruz to the Arts Council, there's a resolution appointing Commissioner O'Donnell to the Chief Electives Official Board, resolution reappointing Commissioner Howell to the Chief Electives Officials Board, resolution appointing Commissioner Cruz to the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, resolution appointing Commissioner Howell to the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, there's a resolution appointing Commissioner Meitzner to WAMPO, and another resolution reappointing Commissioner, Chairman Dennis to WAMPO, a resolution appointing Commissioner Cruz to WAMPO, a resolution reappointing Commissioner Howell to WAMPO, a resolution appointing Commissioner Meitzner to the Wichita WDDC, and the last resolution, we need to modify what's in your, on your agenda, this resolution is, this says appointing Commissioner O'Donnell to the WSU Tech Industry Advisory Board, is actually going, we've prepared a resolution for you, appointing Commissioner Meitzner to the WSU Tech Industry Advisory Board.
Thank you.
All of these resolutions are in proper form, and, and we'd ask that you approve the resolutions.
Any questions, Mr. Papoun? Seeing none, I move that we adopt the resolutions with the change on commission, from the agenda to appoint Commissioner Meitzner to WSU Tech.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
New business, item F, agreement with, agreement with the Central Plains Regional Healthcare Partnership, Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners, and the City of Wichita to partner with the Sedgwick County Health Division under the Project Access Program.
Good morning Commissioners and Board of Health, Adrian Burn, Health Director. Project Access, as Shelley said, is a partnership program that facilitates accessibility to medical care, including needed medical prescriptions and equipment for uninsured, low-income residents of Sedgwick County, and that's those that fall below the 250 poverty guideline. Project Access was created in 1999 and operates within the Central Plains Regional Healthcare Partnership, it's a community-wide network of public and private organizations that identify individuals who may qualify for assistance. The funding for 2018 for Project Access came from a variety of sources, including City of Wichita, Sedgwick County, United Way, and then private donations, as well as a hefty The $200,000 that allotted for 2019 will be used to fund portions of numerous salaried physicians, as well as pay for prescription and durable medical equipment. In 2018, Project Access served 810 patients, the donated hospital care was valued at approximately $7 million, donated physician care valued at approximately $2 million, and they provided $300,000 in purchased and donated medications, as well as purchased $17,000 in medical equipment for patients with city and county funding. I recommend that you approve the agreement and authorize the chair to sign, and I can answer any questions, as well as Shelley.
Thank you, Adrian, do we have any questions from the commission? Commissioner Cruz?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say that you guys are doing a great job, and thank you so much for your presentation today, and I look forward to rappelling down that building.
You're brave, brave.
Well, this is something that is ongoing, and it has a huge impact on our community. First of all, I think that we owe a great debt of gratitude to the medical providers that are providing this service, what we're doing is helping facilitate that, but it's really the medical providers that are providing the service that are the true heroes in this, and there are, those are the folks that we need to make sure that we thank very much for what they do for our community on a volunteer basis. I don't see any other comments, by the way, I will not be one of the ones going off the side of the building, I'll be there for moral support, beyond that, I'll be safe and sound. So, anyway, I see no other comments whatsoever, so, I move that we approve the agreement and authorize me to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here, thank you. Next item, please.
Item G, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on February 7th, 2019.
Good morning Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, this meeting that was conducted on February 7th of the Board of Bids and Contracts results in one item, and that item is contractual services for the Division on Aging Transportation Program, and the recommendation is to accept the transportation providers as listed at the contracted rates for a period of one year. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval of this item.
Do we have any questions for Joe? I don't see any questions this morning. I move that we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Morning Chairman and Commissioners, Tom Stills with County Manager's Office, recommend you approve consent items H through O.
Any questions on the consent agenda from anyone? Seeing none, move that we approve Hotel through Oscar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Thank you, Mr. Papoun, what we have this morning?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to let you know, our, two of our primary items for the, on our platform, the election bill now has a number, it's Senate Bill 129, and before the Senate Ethics Elections and Local Government Committee. Just yesterday, it came out, our nuisance abatement bill is House Bill 2238, and that's before the House Local Government Committee. Keep in mind that these two bills will likely be calendared, or could be calendared as early as tomorrow, and could be hearings on these bills next week, and we may need commission, commission involvement in, in that process. I noticed yesterday, House Bill 2237 is out, which is a bill that routinely comes up, which would allow counties and cities to post legal notices on the internet, to save the counties some money, probably want to support that bill. I believe, we have received notice from the sheriff about Senate Bill 114, which has just come out too, which appears to shove the healthcare costs of prisoners in our custody to the counties and away from cities and hospitals, and he is concerned, very concerned about that bill, and I've talked to the Kansas Association of Counties, and they're also offering testimony, they're very concerned about that bill as well, and we're gonna have to be in opposition to that bill. Yesterday, there was a hearing on House Bill 2026, the Fire Sprinkler Bill, and Chris Labrum, Labrum, from our Director of MABCD, was up in Topeka in opposition to that bill, and from my understanding, for Mr. Labrum, and for Mr. Leeds, there were ten opponents to the bill, and the bill's sponsor said we definitely, the opponents definitely won the day, yesterday, and they're gonna be relooking at that bill, so obviously, there was a good job on the part of Mr. Labrum and City and County Fire to raise some concerns about that bill. That's all I have this time.
Super, do we have questions from Mr. Papoun on the legislative agenda? First of all, I appreciate where we're at, as soon as you hear something about the, any testimony that needs to be provided on a couple of our bills, please let us know, because some of those, we may need to get Commissioners in Topeka on a short notice, so, we need to be prepared for that, I am very happy that we're winning on the Fire Sprinkler Bill, I am kind of disappointed on Senate Bill 114, because that will be a significant impact on the financial situation in Sedgwick County, if we have to pick up all of those expenses, so, I can understand why cities might be in favor of it, because it removes the cost from them, but it doesn't remove the cost from being there, so we'll have to pick all that up, so that's kind of unfortunate for us. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a clarification, was that Senate Bill 214 or 114?
114, sir.
It was 114, and then, do we have a status on the legislation for the election commissioner appointment, is that in a bill form right now, do we know?
The, the bill that was introduced that would allow the larger counties to appoint, I can get you a status on that, Commissioner Howell, I didn't see any activity on that.
No, okay, I didn't think there probably would be any, but I would expect it's probably in a bill form at this point, so we ought to be tracking that as well, and on these other bills, the ones you mentioned on the election changes and the abatement, on those, if we, if we know when they're going to have a, a hearing, please let us know as soon as possible, in fact, I would, I would like to know if the county's going to prepare at least written testimony, and have that submitted as early as possible, otherwise, we need, we need to at least have written available in, in those hearings, and we can do that as early as right now, as a matter of fact, so, whether we get to go there or not, we can certainly submit written testimony.
I think, Commissioner, that for the elections bill, I think we're gonna strongly recommend that our election commissioner Tabitha Lehman also testify, and I believe we'll have probably, somebody from the county, probably one of the county commissioners, not the chairman, testify in favor of that bill, and, and the same thing on the nuisance abatement bill, I think we need to do more than just submit.
I would agree, yeah. That's all my questions right now, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions on legislative? Seeing none, you must have done a very good job of explaining those. Thank you. Next item, please.
Other.
Does anyone have anything to discuss under others? Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to give a shout out to Scott Lindbeck, he is our stormwater expert, he does our stormwater engineering, he attended and spoke at the Sedgwick County Association of Cities meeting this last Saturday, and he just does a tremendous job, every time he speaks, I'm, I'm always so impressed, he did a tremendous job, and I think his PowerPoint that he showed ought to be, maybe, showed at one of our staff meetings coming up, I think it's just such a good news story there. I would also, I guess, like to, to get an update on the Sedgwick County Stormwater Advisory Board, if they plan to meet or not, since we do have new commissioners, I'd like to maybe get us up to speed on what's happening there, if anything. I think, the last time we talked about this, it was really kind of got, kind of got stalled over the issue of revenue potentially for fixing issues around the county, we've identified about a half billion dollars worth of problems, but we have no revenue to deal with fixing any of that, so, that seems to be the, the big issue there, but since we do have a new commission, and since Scott does such a great job, I'd like to kind of dust that topic off and have a new discussion with, with my colleagues. And then, second to that, I've been trying to bring this up numerous times, I should have done this last Wednesday, I, I failed to remember this, and then, then yesterday during staff, I was gonna bring it up, we just ran out of time, and I had to go to another appointment, but I would like to have a discussion, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman, on this issue of tiny homes, I've been, something I've been working on now for better part of a year, this, what I would like to see us do potentially, we use the term moratorium on, on wind and solar, there's numerous tiny home developments being discussed and continue to be discussed, and I think our zoning laws are not really ready for what may be happening, and just to be on record, I'm not against tiny homes, I just think our zoning laws need to be reviewed, with that in mind, to make sure that we have the things in place we would like to have in place to deal with the, the, the change in what we're seeing in our, in our community, so, what I would like to do is see us consider a moratorium, we can do this maybe next week, but I'd like to have, just throw the thought out there, consider a moratorium on tiny homes, it's not against anybody that's doing anything, in fact, there's a, a tiny home subdivision being, being planned right now for 143rd Street, but that's inside the City of Wichita, so this would have no impact on what Wichita's doing, or what the developers are doing on 143rd Street, so I'll make that clear, but in terms of the unincorporated, I think we have to review our zoning, our zoning laws and consider potentially a zoning classification for tiny homes, we'd have to define what that means, first of all, and then consider if we want to zone them such that they are managed much like you would see multifamily housing, or manufactured housing, mobile homes, other types of housing, so, I would like to consider a zoning classification for tiny homes, of course, we have to, again, as I said, we have to define what that means, first of all, and second thing I'd like to do on this moratorium is review our processes, you know, how, how we notify people, whether or not we need to have a hearing or not, what's happening right now is during annexation, they can do a plat and a, a zone change during annexation, and it ends up being a single, a single decision point, and a notification and a hearing is not necessarily required by the law, I guess we would, we have the option of putting those things in place if we would like to, we don't have to do that, but I think it's something we should consider, because I think it affords people a chance to know what's going on and, and speak to the issue, and as representatives of our, of our communities, we have to be, we have to be able to hear from them when they have these concerns, and so, so the, the moratorium would be for two purposes, one, to, to review our zoning and our processes related to the zoning, plating of areas and the unincorporated relating to tiny homes, and, and then, of course, the, consider what things we'd like to have in zoning that, that deals with tiny homes in terms of setbacks or lot sizes, or anything else you could think of, so, that's really what I would like to ask for, potentially next week, I just want to throw the thought out there, and hopefully we can come back to this and have a, a decision by the board whether we want to have a moratorium, and then dig into these issues, that's all, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
I failed to mention earlier, thank you Chairman, Kent mentioned Mays High is doing, they have a solar initiative going on, and they are having a car wash until the 18th at Charlie's Car Wash out west, and they have already raised $140,000, which I think is incredible for a school to raise that much money, so if you're interested in helping out, Charlie's Car Wash, Save the Planet, is what they're calling it, so it's going until the 18th of this month. If you have any other questions, be, be sure to contact me or anybody here, and we can get you that information.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you Chairman, Mr. Chairman, also, Commissioner Howell, on the, on this so-called tiny homes that are still undefined, I've had numerous meetings with Dale Miller and the Planning Commission, and, and I think maybe a week might be pretty, pretty quick to do that. and I think maybe a week might be pretty quick to do this. But I would be glad to join you and Dale and maybe the, maybe legal and, because right now, I don't even think it's defined square foot.
Correct.
What a tiny, so everybody says tiny homes, but nobody really knows, there's no legal square foot definition of them. Some, you know, obviously, ones on wheels fall under the, fall under the mobile home world jurisdiction. So I'm glad to join. I'm not against this at all, as much as I think there's a lot more than just the word tiny home that gets thrown out there.
I understand. Really, just to make sure it's clear, I'm not suggesting we solve the problem in a week. I just think we need to consider an official moratorium. And just to be clear also, without giving any details, there's been numerous tiny home discussions in southeast Sedgwick County, primarily in my district. So the one that we all know of is called the Macromansions subdivision, and they're not considered low-cost housing, but we have other ones that are being considered that truly are low-cost, very small, and intended to help people, you know, find a place to live that are maybe currently homeless. And so there's various types of housing we're talking about. So all I'm asking for is potentially a six-month moratorium to review what we do, to figure out how to define tiny homes. That might be the first step. Maybe we could do that in steps. Maybe get that definition into our codes first and create a classification. But I think this is going to be probably at least a six-month process, would be my guess.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
I defer. I think, Mr. Manager, you have something you want to add?
Chairman and Commissioner, might I recommend, I know we have a staff meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, but the way we tackled solar and wind was we vetted it in the staff meetings, so all commissioners could be aware. If we could budget a little bit more time for next Tuesday, I think having Dale at the table, I would think Chris Labrum from Building should be at the table and some of their staff to come in and brief us on the existing situation and a plan forward, and then draft a potential moratorium after we have vetted all commissioners.
Okay. Thank you.
And on a brighter note, are you going to announce that we've got the baseball, we have the groundbreaking today? And I think the public, it's this exciting time. I've been involved in the last year and a half of the baseball development into our city and our region. And of course, the groundbreaking is today, but I'd like to, the idea of a baseball field, there's so much you can do with a stadium. There's first, second, third base, but it's really the, it's the atmosphere around the stadium that's going to provide a real gathering place, multiple events. Just, it's very exciting what all is going to be in the, outside the stadium. And so today is just the groundbreak for the stadium, but the impact in the region in our county for sure, and the region is going to be enormous on the other stuff that goes on. So that's just my two cents.
Well, thanks. Thanks for bringing that up today. I think all the commissioners will be over there at eleven o'clock this morning toward the groundbreaking for the new Baldiament. One thing I noticed in the plans is that they're talking about hosting high school football games there in the fall, and I am definitely for that. And I will volunteer right now in Northwest High School to play the first game there. I haven't talked to the athletic director or the principal yet.
Well, that's true, because there's, I mean, today, there's games on Thursday night, because there's not enough, not enough stadiums in the city for the city league and other leagues. So it's got a, it's got a chance, not only for Northwest and the city league, but even other regional games that might be attractive from our, in our community. So good stuff.
Thanks for bringing that up. Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Howell, do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see anything else under other. Next item, please.
Executive session.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for twenty minutes until, that'd be ten fifteen, for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel to consider employment negotiations related to a county employee, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session no later than, again, ten fifteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. Dean Nunn, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
We'll be back in the small class room.
Just the basic fire knowledge that I got was really how much further I can push myself physically and mentally than maybe I ever thought I could before.
I've learned so much. One of the great things about being in the academy here at Sedgwick County is that we have a great opportunity to learn with so many different people.
The hardest part for me was probably adjusting to actual fire scenarios. That's the first time I've ever been in a situation like that where it was actually hot.
We had to get up a slide so we can get our flag, and our class flag, and it took us three tries, but finally came up with a plan and able to get it. We all came together as a team. To get everything done, we worked really good together. All the guys we have, great, great people.
We got lots of reps in, lots of live fires, learned what it's actually like to be under heat and perform under stressful situations. Learning to work as a team with eight other individuals on a daily basis.
We had to do like a kind of a confined space training with our air packs in the early weeks. You gotta go through pipes, climb upstairs, ladders, all with your full gear on.
You actually got to see like firsthand how a building will collapse, and that was awesome.
Doing the controlled burnout in our garden plan, we got to do some really great training on an actual house. That's training that's hard to beat.
Just did different things, like we would stretch at the beginning of every session, and we could go for a jog, doing it for a mile and a half to maybe two and a half miles. Being part of a team and all of you trying to strive to achieve the same goal and get through something tough together.
And I can't wait to be a part of a job that I just love to go to every day and enjoy thoroughly and also being able to do something positive in our community.
We are Sedgwick County Fire District One, recruit 51801.
Hello, I'm Sergeant Crafton with the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office. Did you know that your first DUI offense can cost you up to a thousand dollar fine and an automatic six-month suspension of your driver's license? Last year alone, there were nearly 2,000 alcohol-related accidents. Of those, 25% resulted in an injury or a loss of at least one life. One in four occupants in a DUI-related accident are either injured or killed as a result of the collision. All DUI accidents can be avoided. When you go out for the evening, plan ahead. Use ride sharing, have a designated driver, or call a family member for a ride home. Buckle up.
Get a ride home.
And don't drink and drive.
Welcome to Sedgwick County Division of Corrections. Come join our team. We have an extensive range of facilities and programs. You could work with either adults or juveniles. We have job opportunities at the Juvenile Detention Facility, Juvenile Residential Facility, Juvenile Intake and Assessment Center, Home Base Supervision, Juvenile Field Services, Adult Field Services, Adult Residential and Work Release Program, and Criminal Justice Alternatives.
My name is Trey Davis, and I'm an intensive supervision officer. I'm on the high-risk team for probation, so I meet with my clients weekly. I help them get jobs, help them get into treatment, make sure they're attending treatment. I go to court for them if they're in jail. I'm basically the middleman between my client and the judge. I do love my job. I like meeting with my clients. It's rewarding when they complete probation, when they get off successfully. It's fun to see them grow into people of society that are successful.
My name is Anna Aguilar, and I'm a correctional worker at JDF. I supervise the kids on a daily basis. I hold them responsible for their expectations every day, issue not discipline when they don't follow through with their expectations, and I try to build rapport with them. Always wanted to work with kids directly to try to make a difference in their lives.
My name is Samuel Orban. I'm a senior correctional worker here at Juvenile Detention Facility, helping our people, helping our kids, helping out troubled youth, and just getting a good impact out of them with all my experience and all the backgrounds that I've inquired. It takes somebody special to work in this department, and you gotta be ready to make a positive change in people's lives because they're gonna be back in the community.
Our mission is to provide a continuum of evidence-based correctional services in our community, which promotes public safety and accountability while supporting positive behavior change in an effort to reduce recidivism. Sedgwick County offers a competitive benefits package: health, dental, and vision insurance, Caper's Retirement Plan, 457B Pre-Tax Retirement Plan, dependent care and medical flexible spending accounts, vacation leave, sick leave, and ten paid holidays.
Come join us.
Come join us.
Apply now. Go to hrepartners.com for more information on job functions.
...
Order for wind February 13th, 2019. We just returned from executive session. I'd like to declare that no action was taken during executive session. Any commissioners have anything that they need to bring up this time?